Harding.
Here.
Hug.
Melton.
Here.
Roe. Festerson.
Here.
Goodwin.
Here.
Mr. President.
Here. Please stand for the Pledge Allegiance and remain standing for the opening remarks by me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which stands on a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good afternoon, please be seated. So far this year, we've had four parades, I think. We had the St. Patrick's Day Parade, Cinco de Mayo, Juneteenth, and this past weekend, although I didn't make it, I was on a family vacation with my family. We had the Heartland Pride Parade. And these are all great examples of the welcoming and open city that we have where people participate and celebrate great things in our city. So I know we had a successful past weekend for the Heartland Pride, and the mayor was there, and a lot of people that are here were there as well. So it's, I just want to recognize that the great welcoming body that our city has for all these great events. Thank you.
An affidavit publication is on file for the pre-council and city council meeting, and a current copy of the Open Meeting Act is posted in a white binder on the east wall of legislative chambers.
Good afternoon, welcome to this meeting of the Omaha City Council. As a courtesy to those in attendance and to facilitate the conduct of our business, we ask that you please silence or turn off all electronic devices. A reminder that you will have three minutes to speak on an agenda item. Please stay on topic. If you would like your comments entered into the public record, you can email the City Clerk's Office at cityclerk@cityofomaha.org. Council members receive these emails and we read them. Finally, council members may ask members of the audience back up for clarifying questions, but not for extra time to speak. We now have a proclamation to be read by Councilmember Harding.
Thank you.
Sorry, did I take that from you?
Okay. Whereas the National Recreation and Park Association has designated July as Parks and Recreation Month, an annual observance dedicated to recognizing the vital role parks play, parks and recreation play, in enriching lives and strengthening communities. And whereas all residents of the greater Omaha metro are encouraged to explore our local parks, participate in recreational activities as they are able. And whereas parks and recreation facilities, programs, and services are essential to the health and well-being of all residents, offering opportunities for physical activity, mental rejuvenation, and social connection. And whereas parks and recreational, recreation professionals, volunteers, and advocates work tirelessly to create and maintain safe, accessible, and inclusive spaces for all people of all ages, abilities, backgrounds to enjoy. And whereas investing in parks and recreation yields significant returns, fostering economic vitality, enhancing property values, and attracting tourism. And whereas the city of Omaha is proud of its vibrant park system, diverse recreational programs, and dedicated professionals who strive to make our community a better place to live, work, and play. Now therefore, be it resolved that the city of Omaha and the council officially designates July 2025 as Parks and Recreation Month, and urges all residents to celebrate the countless benefits of our parks and recreational opportunities. In witness whereof, we have set our hands and caused the official seal of the city to be affixed on this 15th day of July 2025. Then I'll ask Director Kalsovich to say a few words on behalf of the Parks Department.
Council President, Members of the City Council, Matt Kalsovich, Parks and Recreation Director, Councilmember Harding, thank you for reading that. Thank you for this opportunity to recognize Park and Recreation Month. We do encourage everyone, all times of the year, but certainly here in July, as part of the recognition by our parent organization, National Recreation Park Association, and their feature of parks during the month of July, to get out and enjoy our system, and to get out and explore. And if you have a regular park, I encourage you to go one park over, or to one of our larger community or regional parks, and see if you can find a new experience. I think you won't have too hard a time doing that, and I think you'll really enjoy it. So on behalf of our 178 full-time employees, our almost 500 part-time staff serving as we speak, out at our camps, aquatic facilities, and community centers, I want to thank you for this recognition and this opportunity to celebrate Parks and Rec here in Omaha. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll give it to him later. I know where he lives.
Item six, to consider a Class D liquor license for Mai Tai Cuisine located at 2279 South 67th Court, Suite B.
I will now open the public hearing. Before I call for proponents, is the applicant here? Good afternoon, get your name and address, please.
My name's Preeta, join us, eh? The address is 18214 Dewey Avenue, Elkhorn, Nebraska, 681-68022.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents here?
No, only me.
Okay. Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Councilmembers, discussion. Motion in a second, roll call.
Harding.
Yes.
Hug.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Roe.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Goodwin.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Aye.
Motion passed seven to zero.
Thank you.
Item seven, to consider a Class D liquor license for Hammerill Brand Asian Supermarket located at 6225 Ames Avenue.
Hello, everybody. I respect all the city of Omaha, on rubber level, all the peoples. My name is Diden Tamong, and I live in 3724 North 52nd Street. I live in since 2011 in Omaha. I'm doing the small business here, so I try to work hard. Thank you.
One moment. Thank you.
You can continue with this.
Okay. Are there any other proponents? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Council member Festerson, you're recognized.
Thanks, Mr. President. Welcome. Thanks for being here today. I just wanted to ask you a few questions about the proposed license here and your intentions with the grocery store. This is in my district, I think by one block, with very, very close to Councilmember Goodwin's district. And we've dealt with several locations along the Ames Street corridor here in the past that have drawn some concern, at least from me, in terms of the density of some of these licenses and how we've had some challenges in the area in the past. So I just wanted to engage on that conversation a little bit. Would this be your first liquor license?
Yes.
Okay. And then tell us about the operations of your store and what you'll be selling there.
The operation?
Yeah. It's a grocery store, right?
Yeah. No, yes, it's a grocery store, yeah.
So you'll be selling all kinds of different grocery items?
It's like, we are selling the litter of clothing store to clothing, and like, on all the grocery stores, mostly grocery stores.
Okay. And then you're a Class D liquor license, so it's off-sale only, right? And that's beer, wine, and liquor? Okay. Will you also be selling small containers?
Yes.
Yes? Okay. That has drawn some concern from the neighbors in the past along this corridor. We may have some additional conversation about that here today. I know the law committee discussed that particular issue, to see what you might be willing to compromise on that. And your hours of operation? I believe it's 9:00 a.m. to 8:00 a.m.?
Oh, yes. It starts like 9:00 a.m. to like 8:00 p.m.
Okay. And is that Monday through Friday, about seven days a week?
The seven days, seven days, yeah.
Okay. All right. Will you have any kind of training for your people that are selling liquor?
Not yet, so.
Okay.
I'll stay there in the most of the time, yeah. I'll stay there, it's like, all eight hour, twelve hour.
So it's you personally?
Yeah.
Have you ever had any liquor license training or selling of liquor training?
No, no.
Okay. There are classes that the Liquor Commission offers that I think we would suggest folks give a try, and I think it'd be helpful to your operation going forward.
Okay, yeah, we'll try to make more classes, like, need more knowledge about that liquor license.
Okay. All right. I'll stop asking questions for now and see if others have any questions. I'll just say, though, that in the past, I've had some concerns on this corridor, largely to the east, because there is a large amount of liquor licenses along this area, and the density, I think, has been a concern to neighbors in that area and to some churches in that area. So that was, that's been the nature of my vote in the past. That was several blocks to the east. I think you're more at 62nd, but I know there's a sensitivity on this corridor. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. No further lights. Oh, I'm sorry. Is there any other proponents? Seeing none, is there any opponents?
No, no. No.
Public hearing is closed. Councilmember Melton, you're recognized.
But I was wondering if you would agree. I thought maybe we would. In most of the areas that we have, where we have a lot of liquor licenses, and there's some concerns, and we've received opposition, we typically will ask the owners to not sell single cans of beer, and then those little shooters, you know, where you have little shots?
Yeah.
Would you be willing to agree to amend your application to not sell single cans and single shots?
Okay, I agree that. I'll do that, yeah. I'll follow that, so, you know, everybody loves, like, I'll follow that one.
You will, yeah. So that, because what we don't want is for people to come in and basically use your store as like the refrigerator, where they're just coming in and grabbing one can of beer, and then there's litter outside and, and all of that. Would you be willing to amend?
No, no.
No, you're not willing to amend, or no, you're not planning to sell them?
No, we say like, we call those the counter sales, like, you know, we're not like a grab, like, the customer to grab to bring the customer in a counter, like.
Okay, so, I want to make sure, so do you understand what I'm saying? Would you amend your application so that you would agree not to sell the one single can, or one single little shot? You would just sell six packs, or 12 packs, or the larger bottles?
No, we sell the single pack, too.
Okay, well, I guess, here's my, here's my opinion, because we've held the other liquor store owners to this same standard, and they've, for the most part, they agree not to sell them. So I, I fully support you getting a liquor license, and I am, I will vote yes, as long as there's an amendment on there that you don't sell the single cans or single shots. I don't know where my other council members are on this one, but I think that that might make the people who don't want you to have a liquor license at least feel a little better, and it's kind of our good in-between. So if you're not willing to amend to not sell the single cans and shots, then I won't be able to support the liquor license.
Yes, yeah, I, we not sell that one, yeah.
You're not selling those?
Yeah, yeah, I promise, yeah.
Okay, that's what I thought. So, so, so I guess what I would be willing to do is I would, I think there was a motion in a second.
No, I didn't, don't take my motion, because I didn't do it with.
There's no motion?
Yeah, there's no motion on the.
So what I would like to do is have a motion to amend your liquor license application to include that you will not, there will be no single sales of beer and no sales of distilled spirits of 1.7 ounces or less, otherwise known as airplane shooters.
Motion in a second. Roll call.
Harding.
Yes.
Hug.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Roe.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Goodwin.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Aye.
Motion passed, seven to zero.
Thank you.
Motion in a second, as amended, roll call.
Harding.
Yes.
Hug.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Roe.
Yes.
Festerson.
No.
Goodwin. Yes. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, six to one.
Thank you.
Item eight, a resolution to approve the preliminary plat for Bennington Fire located southwest of 177th and State Streets. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
I will now open the public hearing. Before I call for proponents, is the applicant here? Good afternoon.
Thank you.
Members of the Omaha City Council, my name's Jim Lang. I'm an attorney at 8526 F Street here in Omaha. I represent the Bennington Suburban Fire Protection District. We're here today, with me today is Ben Tyser. Ben is the president of the Suburban Fire Board. We're here today to ask for preliminary plat approval of about a 3.5 acre parcel of property at the southwest corner of 177th and State Streets. Purpose of this would be to move forward, acquire the property for a substation for Bennington Fire. Our main station's on 156th Street. This would be a substation that would be constructed maybe within the next four or five years. Our call amount, as you can imagine, because of the growth of Bennington Fire out in the northwest portion of the county, is growing. And so we're, we're basically planning for the future, and this would be planning for a substation out in this particular area. Ben here has been in contact with Omaha Fire, and Omaha Fire is familiar with the location, and this is acceptable to them for us to build at this particular location. If you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer those. Thank you for your support.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents here today? Seeing none, are there any opponents to item number eight? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Motion in a second, roll call.
Harding.
Yes.
Hug.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Roe.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Goodwin. Yes. Mr. President.
Aye.
Motion passed, seven to zero.
Thank you.
Item nine, a resolution to approve the final plat for Heartland of America Park, replat two, located northeast of 8th and Douglas Streets. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
I'll open the public hearing before I call for proponents. The applicant's here today. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. My name's Cordell Mika, with Lampar Nielsen, on behalf of the owner New Style Development. This will be the future site of the Children's Museum, Beam Apartments, and the City of Omaha Parking Garage. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents here on item number nine? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Councilmember Festerson, you're recognized.
Thanks, Mr. President. I support this project, of course, with a new Omaha Children's Museum in the mix down the riverfront, and this garage and mixed-use and apartment proposal that's involved with this final plat, so I'll support it today. But to my knowledge, the apartments and the parking garage are all on track and on the timeframe that we initially thought. I'm just interested, interested if you had an update for us on the Children's Museum part of this, since it's a major undertaking and requires a lot of fundraising, too.
Yes, so the schedule for New Style Development, who's developing the garage and the apartment complex, had a commitment to deliver a site-ready site for September, which we are on track to accomplish. Then the Children's Museum, I believe, is also on track with design development. Plans come out later this fall, and construction's scheduled to be finished in '27.
Okay, still on track to be completed in '27?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Motion to approve. Motion in a second, roll call.
Harding.
Yes.
Hug.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Roe.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Goodwin.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Aye.
Motion passed, seven to zero.
Thank you.
Items 10 through 12 can be considered together for Turkey Ridge located at 13424 Shawn Gaska Road. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Items 10 and 11 are resolutions to approve the preliminary plat and final plat. Item 12, a resolution to approve the subdivision agreement.
I will now open the public hearing as in items 10 through 12.
Good afternoon, Joe Detlef's, 10836 Old Mill Road. Also here with me is the applicant, Steve Vacha, here to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents here today? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed, no lights, roll call. Or we need a motion, I guess?
Motion.
Thank you, motion in a second, roll call.
Harding.
Yes.
Hug.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Roe.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Goodwin. Yes. Mr. President.
Aye.
Motion passed, seven to zero.
Thank you.
Items 13 through 17 can be considered together for Completely Kids, Henry Davis, located northwest of 24th Avenue and St. Mary's Avenue. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Items 13 and 14 are ordinances to rezone this property from DS District to DS District and CBD District. Items 15 and 16, resolutions to approve the preliminary plat and final plat. Item 17, a resolution to approve the subdivision agreement.
I'll open the public hearing as in items 13 through 17. Are there any proponents here today?
Joe Detlef's, 10836 Old Mill Road. Also here with me is Bart Thompson, Owner's Rep, and Rebecca Harding, Attack Architect. Harding, answer any questions?
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. I got just a couple of questions. So this location, it's the northwest corner of 24th and St. Mary's. So I talked to Ms. Rizzo from Completely Kids. Can you just kind of give us an outline of what's going to be going on that northwest corner?
Sure.
Thank you.
It's going to be an expansion of their existing campus. They've got one to the, to the west and directly across the street to the south. So the site plan... So we got, we got 24th right here, St. Mary's. The proposed building is this kind of great structure, parking lot on the north, and then some outdoor place, play area on the west, some building elevations here. This is standing at this corner, looking south. And then, this is the north elevation, and then the south elevation along 24th Street. And it'll, it'll be an expansion of their campus. They'll have classrooms for after-school programs and all the other, the adult programs and everything else that they do here.
Okay. Is that green space that's there now with the soccer field and the other outdoor areas, that staying with the addition?
Nah, that will get modified. So part of that area is kind of, maybe in this space here. So what's going to happen is some, some of the elements in there, we're going to be trying to salvage and relocate, and, but part of the building will expand into that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. This is a great addition down there. I know, I've been through all the other, let's see, one, two, three buildings, and this is a great addition. So I, I know it's been a long awaited, and I'm, I'll be, I can't make a motion on this, but I'll be glad to support this today. Got a motion in a second, no further lights. Do we get a second? Thought we did. We got a motion in a second. Roll call.
Harding. Hug.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Roe.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Goodwin. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, six to zero. Harding Epstein.
Thank you.
Item 18, an ordinance to rezone properties located along South 28th Avenue from R535 District to GI District. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
I will open the public hearing. The applicant here today. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Rob Robinson, 2027 Dodge Street, representing Community Health Development Partners.
Thank you.
Here to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other proponents here today?
Joe Detlef's, 10836 Old Mill Road.
Thanks, Joe. Any other proponents? Seeing none, are there any opponents?
Correct me if I'm wrong, this was in the, in pre-meeting discussion. Police Humana's 2709 Dewey Avenue. Good afternoon, councilmembers. I'm here today to speak specifically on this item, and generally as a particular planning item. Time and again, we see development proposals brought before council with neighborhood concerns such as traffic displacement, environmental impact, or water runoff, voiced sincerely by community members. And time and again, we watch this council wave those concerns away relying on vague assurances from developers or city staff that the regulations cover it, or the code requires it. Today, we're told increased concrete and improved surface says will have no negative impact on water runoff because of regulations. But codes are the floor, not the ceiling. And let's be honest, developers are not environmental experts. They are bound by profit margins, not by the long-term health of our neighborhoods. What's missing here is scrutiny, not just compliance. We need this council to stop acting as rubber stamp for moneyed interest and start acting as the democratic safeguard it's supposed to be. If regulations don't require additional safeguards to mitigate runoff or preserve neighborhood livability, you have the power and the responsibility to demand them. If we continue to fast-track development without critical review, we're not building a stronger city, we're burying our future in concrete. Please put people first, press pause, ask for more protections, and show us that local democracy, that local democracy is still real in Omaha, whether through this item or elsewhere. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other opponents to item number 18? Public hearing is closed. Councilmember Hug, you're recognized.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Good afternoon, sir.
Good afternoon.
I'm glad to see some movement. And I, I think we all would have liked to see the initial project come to fruition. It didn't happen. But what you and your group are proposing, I think definitely adds value to the community. And I, I did speak last night, well, actually yesterday afternoon, I was out and talked to the one neighbor that decided to stay. And they did not... And they did not express any opposition. But the only concern they had was runoff. And, you know, I assured them the best I could that I haven't seen the elevations, but just from the plat and the renditions we did see, I just assumed that it's going to be nice and level, and it'll probably be a reduction of the runoff onto their property. And am I safe in assuming that?
Yeah, so there'll be a couple different levels because of the nature of that particular slope. But as part of our plan is we have a retention pond that's going to retain all the water runoff. So it actually should be an improvement from the current runoff that's occurring.
Okay. And then, Mr. Fansal, there's building code stipulations on, did it specifically address runoff?
Yeah, Dave Fansal, City Planning. Excuse me, there's, we have stormwater management policies and ordinances in place to assure that the site meets those conditions.
That's correct.
Well, like I said, I spoke to the sole resident yesterday afternoon. Obviously, they're not here today. They couldn't be because of their work schedule. I found you and your group to be very responsive whenever I've reached out to you with any issues, and I hope that we continue that as we move forward and that project builds out, that you do give me your word you're going to take care of that neighbor.
Absolutely. That's our job.
Thank you, sir. Motion to approve.
Motion in a second. No further lights. Roll call.
Harding.
Yes.
Hug.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Rowe.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Goodwin.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Aye.
Motion passed, seven to zero.
Thank you.
Items 19 through 21 can be considered together for property located southeast of 49th Street and north Saddle Creek Road. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Bees Communication and Support. Item 19, an ordinance to rezone this property from GC District to MBD District. Item 20, an ordinance to approve a PUR overlay district. Item 21, a resolution to approve a special use permit to allow restaurant drive-in in the MBD District.
I will open the public hearing as items 19 through 21. Applicant here today. Good afternoon.
Hi, Brendan Fendle with Lampre Nielsen, 14710 West Dodge Road, here representing the applicant and owner. With me today is also Aaron Gaul with TAC Architects, leading the building design. But I'm here to answer any questions.
Thank you. Is there any other proponents here today on items 19 through 21? Seeing none, are there any opponents? No, no, okay.
Larry Store, 5015 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha 68132. I'm against this plan because I don't think there's been enough real transparency on it. I do live in the area. I drive that area every day, sometimes two or three times. And I'm quite aware of the divine neglect by the city of Omaha. Very many ordinances. There is no such thing as private property when the city can take the property from you through eminent domain or whatever method they want to take it. Special assessments, for example, drive citizens out because they can't afford it. But that area has been neglected. It is an extremely blighted area headed for development, but not until somebody declares that they can't build it without TIF. This is what seems to be happening here. And the process is, you avoid the problem, you neglect it, you let it run down, then you go in and inspect it and find people special fees or special assessments in order to drive them out of the area. Now, the other reasons I'm agloy against this is there is already one very nice, famous restaurant in that area. There is no need to have a special ordinance to provide for another restaurant. Why? Why are you doing that? And why are you developing around the one favorite restaurant that does exist there? Well, yes, people can eat across the street also at a bar, but because they probably serve from that very famous Italian restaurant in my neighborhood. And I am protesting that. The development there is going to restrict the business to my favorite restaurants in that area in favor of what? Another pizza place? Just down the street? Down the street towards Northwest Radio. Look up that hill, either direction, and you'll see divine neglect by the city of Omaha. Years ago, you ran the mayor and inspectors down to a location where people had been settled on refugee thing and drove them out because things were in neglect. If you drive that area and also the Walnut Hill area, there is a lot of divine neglect in those apartment buildings on either hill. I've got pictures of it. And nobody wants to talk about it. Until you let it go for next to nothing for a dollar, the new guy buys it for a dollar, the property value is a dollar. He says, I can't build it without TIF, so he gets it built with next to nothing. And a lot of times, that guy is a real estate company. You call him a developer. Yes, he maybe does both. Or he's also a construction...
Your time's up, Larry. Thank you. Thank you. Your time's up. Thanks, Larry. Are there any other opponents to items 19 through 21? Public hearing is closed. Councilmember Festerson, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. Brendan, if you'd maybe just available for a few more questions. I support this project, and it does a number of great things at this particular site. The Business Improvement District supports it, the neighborhood supports it, because on this particular site has been a nicer, frankly, for a long period of time. And it's an industrial use that's not consistent with the future of this area. And at the present time, we have a $5 million renovation of this business district happening, both from city and philanthropic sources and from the property owners themselves, to really prepare for success in this area going forward and for all these small businesses, of which this will be one. So the items we have here today do a lot of good things. It takes it from general commercial to neighborhood business district zoning, which is part of the overlay we adopted there on purpose. Does not include TIF. This product does not include any kind of city incentive. It's a private redevelopment. It does include a special use permit, which I think pertains to your access and a potential drive-through for the restaurant.
Yes.
Take a moment just to talk about the site itself, the landscaping, and then your timeframe, if you would.
Sure. So I, I'm not sure on this. So the site itself is this corner lot here, and so the intent for the special use permit is to be able to provide a drive-through for the site. So the main building will be over in this location here, and then there will be a drive-through off on this east end here. So the south end of this leg is not being developed, but it'll be landscaped in grass. But we are providing landscaping adjacent to North Saddle Creek that follows the urban design and the design with the North Saddle Creek Streetscape Improvements Project. So we've worked with our design team to coordinate there. And so there will be tree plantings and screening along the parking to the west here. So we'll be adding a couple park, or six or so parking stalls here, as well as there'll be on-street parking from the Saddle Creek Improvement Project.
Great. I'm pleased to hear you're coordinating directly with the team there. This is consistent with what they're doing in their plans. Describe your timeline. Obviously, we're going to have a lot of construction coming through here. We are yet today, and probably until October, November, until that project is complete throughout the Saddle Creek corridor. What's your timing in terms of construction and looking to be open?
Sure. So the design phase will be starting here shortly, and I believe we'll be hoping to submit for building permit sometime towards the end of this year, early next year, and hopefully to be able to start construction in the spring if we're staying on that timeline. So we don't have any construction slated for this year at all.
Okay. Ideally, open in the spring.
Construction would start spring of '26.
Okay.
And then probably about a year, it's eighteen months of construction to be able to open up.
Okay. Well, we appreciate your interest in this area. This is exactly what we're trying to accomplish and to attract more small businesses. I look forward to seeing the second location of tasty pizza in the city.
Thank you.
All right. Motion to approve items 19 through 21.
Got a motion in a second. Councilmember Hug, you're recognized.
If I go home tonight without asking you this question, I probably won't get dinner. But when will a 32nd Avenue store open up?
I, I'm not sure when, if there's any other expansion plans with the owner. I'm just aware of this one site here.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Yep.
No further lights. Roll call.
Harding.
Yes.
Hug.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Rowe.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Goodwin.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Aye.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Item 22, a resolution to designate a community redevelopment area for 48th and Q Street as legally described on the agenda.
I'll open the public hearing. Item number 22, Mr. Seaton. Good afternoon.
Oh, yeah. Good afternoon. Don Seaton, Omaha City Planning. This item asks you to designate a portion of the city as a community redevelopment area. As you're aware, the reason that we designate place, areas as a CRA, Community Redevelopment Area, is so that the tax increment financing program, the TIF program, can be used to assist redevelopment projects within the boundaries of the CRA. This map here shows in lavender the existing CRAs within the city. The little yellow spot is the area we're looking at today. And we use census geography to do these studies. And the study area, Block Group Two of Census Track 7101, the star shows the redevelopment site. The redevelopment site, we launched a study in response to a request from Caesar Garcia of Canopy South. They're working to redevelop a large parcel, vacant parcel in that site at 48th and Q Streets. It'd be developed as an affordable housing project funded with Lytech funds, and they would like to have tax increment financing so that they can get the maximum number of units of affordable housing on that site. There's a study area again. Now, state law calls these CRA areas blighted and substandard. Both of these terms have very detailed definitions. There's a study in your packets and available to the public online that lays out both of those definitions. It also describes the criteria and requirements for CRA designation. This area meets those criteria. It meets CRA criteria for blighted Part B because the per capita income is $27,000, which is much less than the city's overall per capita income. And also, the age of structures exceeds 50 years. I would note that physically, some of the infrastructure is substandard, lacking sidewalks. This is a redevelopment site here. And the pavement is substandard in areas. We are recommending approval of the CRA designation and ask for your support. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any proponents here today on item 22?
Louis C. Menace, 2709 Dewey Avenue. I recall criticism of the TIF is that it's being overused and that a developer might say, well, we're not going to use TIF for this because we're going to use our own money. The truth is, they might not be able to use TIF because of the CRA map. They might be outside of the CRA map, but they don't say that. They just say, oh, we're not going to use TIF. But on the flip side, when you're adding something like this into the CRA map, you should be also balancing the scope and taking areas that do not conform with perceived definition of blighted areas in statutory definition of a blighted area, so that you can have a more honest presentation of the CRA map. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents here today? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Item 22.
Larry Store, 5015 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha 68132. I'm opposed to just about every TIF project. This goes along with the one I mentioned a little bit earlier, but also the Walnut Hill District. And I want to tell you why this is lack of transparency makes it look like there's a little corruption going on in the city of Omaha. That area, somebody decided they want to declare that as sublighted or standard, substandard or blighted, so that a developer, who is often also a real estate person, selling real estate, can come in and buy that for next to nothing, get a lower property tax value to start with, and delay that property tax increment increase for 25 years, maybe. Excuse me, a real estate company in Omaha that wants to call themselves a developer or a construction company can do this. A lot of them won't because if they just wait long enough, you'll declare it won't get done, so we'll give them TIF. You got to change that. Now, if you walk over and drive through the Walnut Hill District, it's a hell of a lot more severe blighted than that. And the area for your earlier items on the agenda today, a lot more severely blighted than that. And you've divinely neglected those areas for how long? You have homeless people breaking into the properties in Walnut Hill and that part of Dundee along Saddle Creek Road and just up the hill towards Cumming Street, all the way from 50th to 45th Street East, from Cumming to Hamilton Street, maybe a little further north. You are neglecting so that you can do the same kind of thing, but it's not like that. People are breaking in the places, boarding up windows, they're setting fires in properties, and the city's doing nothing. It is a public health hazard. It is a public issue, and the city needs to clean it up before you start giving away stuff like this to construction companies. Go after the real estate owners or maybe out-of-state owners that are neglecting their properties, people busting into them and tearing them up, setting them on fire.
Item 22 on the agenda here?
People live in those districts, and they're in danger. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other opponents here today? Item 22. Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Councilmember Hug, you are recognized.
I couldn't be happier that Canopy South is initiating this project. That vacant building that's on that property, the largest vacant building that's on that property and the parking lot have been the source of many complaints from my constituents. I've had to reach out to Canopy South several times, numerous times. They've always been very responsive, but being a vacant building is kind of an attraction. But they've been very responsive, and I'm just glad that they're there, and I'm glad they're doing this project, and I fully support it.
Thank you. No further lights. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Got a motion? Motion in a second. Roll call.
Harding.
Yes.
Hug.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Rowe.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Goodwin.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Aye.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Consent agenda. Any member of the city council may cause any item placed on the consent agenda to be removed. Items removed from the consent agenda shall be taken up by the city council immediately following the consent agenda in the order in which they were removed unless otherwise provided by the city council rules of order.
Public hearings on agenda items 23 through 31 were held on July 1, 2025. Is there any council discussion? Motion in a second. Councilmember Melton, you're recognized.
Thank you. I just, my question goes to Public Works on Garbage, and I know the answer to this one, but I had a few emails and there were a few posts. Apparently, there is a private garbage company that is telling the people in Stone Creek that the city of Omaha will not allow them to keep their current garbage company. And basically, the city won't allow it. And I know the answer to that. I would just like to have it on the public record, Mr. Stube, that that is incorrect. And if anybody from one of the other private garbage collection companies is saying that, that they are wrong.
Bob Stube, Public Works. So obviously, that would be an area that, once it's annexed, the city would provide... So obviously, that would be an area that, once it's annexed, the city would provide that service to those residents in that area, but it does not prohibit anybody as an individual property owner that they can contract with whoever they want to haul their garbage.
Thank you. And in fact, I don't think it would even be legal for the city of Omaha to bar a private entity from providing services to somebody in our, in our city. I don't know, it's probably a legal question. I'll just make that statement, and Mr. Cozy can correct me if I'm wrong. I don't even think that would be legal. The city cannot bar a private entity from providing services inside the city limits of Omaha. So now, I would encourage, I actually think our, we provide a good garbage service, but if somebody else wants to pay for it when they can get it for free, that is their prerogative. With that, I'll be voting yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's see, we got a motion and a second for twenty-three through thirty-one. Ro call.
Harding.
Yes.
Hug.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Roe. Festerson.
Yes.
Goodwin.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Aye.
Motion passed seven to zero.
Public hearings on agenda items thirty-two through forty-nine are today. And I'm removing item number thirty-two. If you wish to address the city council regarding these items, please come up to the microphone, indicate the agenda item number you wish to address, identify yourself by your name, address, and who you represent, and if you are a proponent or opponent. I will now open the public hearings on items thirty-three through forty-nine. Are there any proponents on these today? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Got a motion and a second. Ro call.
Harding.
Yes.
Hug.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Roe. Festerson.
Yes.
Goodwin. Mr. President.
Aye.
Motion passed seven to zero. Item thirty-two, a resolution to approve the professional services agreement with Olson Inc. to provide for the Thirteenth Street Walkability Study Project. A's communication and support.
I'll open the public hearing on item number thirty-two. Are there any proponents here today?
Hi. Louis Smith, fourteen oh seven South Thirteenth Street. I'm speaking on behalf of the Little Bohemia BID. We are in favor of this walkability study. It is an update to the walkability study from two thousand and eighteen. That is, it doesn't sound like a long time, but that is seven years of development, new businesses, and increased traffic and increased safety concerns to Little Bohemia. So we are in favor of this, of this new walkability study.
Thanks, Louis.
Thank you.
Any other proponents? Scott, good afternoon.
Good afternoon, council members. I'm Scott Dobby with Omaha by Design, six eighteen South Eleventh Street. We are here also, like Louis, in support of the South Thirteenth Street Walkability Study. We really just humbly urge all parties involved to give this process some serious consideration. We are hopeful that it may lead to a road diet, to be honest, there on South Thirteenth, at least for a portion of that. As you know, South Thirteenth Street is not merely a transportation corridor. It's home to a burgeoning small business district, a tight-knit residential community, and a growing sense of identity. Any future improvement should elevate public safety, support economic vibrancy, and enhance the experience of being there, not diminish it in the name of vehicle throughput alone. And across the country, we're seeing this. We're seeing cities, and they're thinking about rightsizing their streets, often through a three-lane configuration, and that can really improve safety, it can calm traffic, and it can create more walkable, economically vibrant places. We really believe that South Thirteenth Street has that same potential. You know, as we plan for the future, I think we should acknowledge how quickly mobility is changing also, as Louis said, you know, seven years doesn't sound like a long time, but it is. And since this corridor was last studied in two thousand and eighteen, we've seen the emergence of electric scooters, e-bikes, bus rapid transit, and now a coming modern streetcar here in the city. You know, with that pace of change, long-range traffic forecasts should, I think, be taken with a little bit of a grain of salt. You know, if we allow those projections to drive design decisions today, we're at risk of missing a rare opportunity to create a safer and more livable street that reflects how people move and live now and not just how they might in decades to come. So in summary, I guess, we just really believe that South Thirteenth Street is really one of those dynamic spots in our city. It's a destination in its own right, and we just hope that we can move this forward study, move this study forward in a way that reflects that. Thanks so much.
Thanks, Scott. A question for you, Louis, since you came down today. Good afternoon. How you doing?
Hi.
Louis, when you and I first got together when I was elected to the council in two thousand and twenty-one, and you wanted to form the Little Bohemia Business Improvement District, in your own words, what was the number-one driver of the formation of that?
The number-one driver was advocacy on behalf of the neighborhood for a safer Thirteenth Street.
For pedestrians and vehicles?
For pedestrians and vehicles.
Okay. And I know you and I have had a lot of meetings, and Scott and I have met on this, and I'm excited for this walkability study to reboot, an update to one that would happen several years ago. And obviously, with the businesses that have grown down there and the development that's going on with the apartments that are already on Twelfth and Howard, the Little Bow Flats and Thirteenth and Fourteenth and William area, there's some future proposals there for a couple hundred units on that end of the street. On Thirteenth and Pine, we just are recently completing a project there, I think it was fifty-nine or so apartments. So that, I just appreciate you coming down today and all the work that the BID has put into wanting that to be a great area and a safe area. So I think the walkability study that we're voting on here today is a great step for that. So.
Yeah.
Appreciate you coming down.
Yeah, we appreciate you, Danny. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
I can't make a motion on this, but I'm certainly supportive of it. Motion and a second. Ro call. Motion and a second. Ro call. Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, I apologize. Are there any other proponents for this? Seeing none, are there any opponents to item number thirty-two?
Louis C. Menace, twenty-seven oh nine Dewey Avenue. While I am a perennial proponent for rockability, I've just been astounded of the development that's been happening in the Little Bohemia area along Thirteenth Street. It's just, it's just been like, just been a dump, planning dump, money dump, everything you can get in there. So it's been moving forward, and then other areas nearby and elsewhere in the city don't get that kind of attention. So I hope that the, the area can, will realize the opportunity that they have a hold on and that they really do a good job, not just for economic development, but for revitalization, connecting the peripheral neighborhoods and things like that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, and one more thing. Mr. President, you know, you can provide a second. You don't have to wait for a second.
Is there any other opponents to item number thirty-two today? Seeing none, is there a motion? We have a, I want to do a third. How's that? Ro call.
Harding.
Yes.
Hug.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Roe.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Goodwin. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed seven to zero. Item fifty, a resolution to approve a settlement agreement for Salvador Garcia and Gallagher Basset Services versus City of Omaha in the amount of ninety-five thousand dollars.
I will open the public hearing on item number fifty. Are there any proponents here today?
Jeffrey Bloom, City of Omaha Law Department, here to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other proponents here, item number fifty? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Got a motion? Do we get a second? Motion and a second. No lights. Ro call.
Harding.
Yes.
Hug.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Roe. Festerson.
Yes.
Goodwin.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Aye.
Motion passed seven to zero. Item fifty-one, an ordinance levying a special tax assessment for condemned buildings or structures, group number two thousand and twenty-five dash zero one.
I will open the public hearing on item number fifty-one. Are there any proponents here today? Are there any opponents to item number fifty-one? Public hearing is closed.
Nope. Item fifty-two, an ordinance levying a special tax and assessment on real estate within the North Twenty-Fourth Street BID six eight seven nine.
I will open the public hearing on item number fifty-two. Are there any proponents here today?
Hello. Winsley Durand, one six four six three Monroe Street. I am here on behalf of the North Twenty-Fourth Street Business Improvement District Association and just stating my support for, for the ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other proponents here today?
Good afternoon. My name is Che Barnett, nine zero one Farnum Street, six eight one zero two, and I'm a proponent. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents here today? Seeing none, are there any opponents to item number fifty-two? Public hearing is closed. I beg your pardon. Councilmember Goodwin, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just had a question. I believe this would be for our legal team to explain, just for the public record, what this recommendation is, ordinance. Thank you.
Matt Cozy, Law Department, this ordinance is for the special tax and assessments that are routinely, I guess, levied against all of our BIDs here in Omaha. These are routinely done, and it's part of the normal BID process that is used.
No further lights.
Item fifty-three, an ordinance to amend multiple sections of Chapter ten of the Omaha Municipal Code to rename the city's Economic Sustainability Program and clarify language in the provisions where there is not an engineer's estimate.
I'll open the public hearing on item number fifty-three. Any proponents? Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Council President Bagley, members of the city council, Caitlin DeHilius, Director of the Human Rights and Relations Department for the City of Omaha. I'm in support of this name change to the Economic Sustainability Program and adding language to include the soliciting department's project estimate to guide whether this program applies to a certain project. The name reflects the nature of the program and its intent to address the concentration of poverty in Tier One or economically distressed areas of Omaha. The plans will continue to focus on workforce development, youth engagement, and small and emerging businesses, really looking towards sustainability for individuals and businesses in Omaha, especially focused on Tier One areas of Omaha. I'm here to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents here, item fifty-three? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Mr. Festerson, you're recognized. I got to get better at looking at those lights. The floor is yours.
Thanks, Mr. President. Caitlin, just a quick question for you. So I think you explained it there, but I meant to ask this question this morning, but what we have here is a name change and a clarifying language as it applies to engineers' estimates, but no other implications to the, to these programs, right?
Correct.
Okay. So we continue to work on these programs and have the same goals going forward into future years?
Yes, the same goals, and we've really had a renewed focus on Tier One areas of Omaha and tracking data related to the money subcontracted to SEBs that are, that's reported through the program, apprenticeship hours, new hires and where they're hired from. I can share some of that data now, or I'll share it in our biannual report, but we've really focused on more showing what the program's actually doing with economic and hiring impacts.
Okay, great. That's fine for now. Thanks. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item fifty-four, BJ's Fleet Wash appeals rejection of their bid for March twelfth, two thousand and twenty-five for janitorial services for Omaha Public Libraries.
This is not a public hearing? Let's see. Is there anybody from the public, from the company appealing the bid to speak available today?
Rodney Johnson, BJ's Fleet Wash, sixty-seven sixteen North First Drive. I'm here to just say that the three phone numbers that were given as reference are all valid phone numbers, and I'm willing to dial any one of the phone numbers right now. Thanks.
Thank you.
Jeffrey Bloom, City of Omaha Law Department. In this case, under our Home Rule Charter, section five point one seven, it states that contracts shall be awarded to the bidder submitting the lowest and best bid. This is reiterated in our city code. As part of selecting the lowest and best bid, when it comes to large contracts for services, such as this one, the Library Janitorial Services Contract, it is a bid requirement to submit references so that we can determine the best bidder. In regard to this particular one, we required bidders to upload a references form that we had in the attachment tab, in other words, complete a form. The references form was part of the solicitation, and the instructions were very clear that you had to use our form, and you had to provide all of the information that was necessary for us to be able to reach out to those references and to find out if, in fact, a bidder would be a best bidder. Now, while this may seem particular, if you remember, another bid for the same Library Janitorial Services Contract was rejected because its bid security was three cents short. Given the strictness used with that bid rejection, it is certainly consistent to look at other bid requirements with the same sort of scrutiny. In this case, the department director, who has authority under Omaha Municipal Code ten one ten, has the right to review the bids and determine if any or all bids should be rejected. Now, in this case, the department director found that two particular bids were nonconforming when it came to the references form. It's BJ's Fleet Wash, which you're talking about right now. It's one of them. The references form required the three references to have the following information submitted with each reference, the business name, address, contact person, telephone number, and email. In this case, BJ Fleet Wash did not submit all of that information for three valid references. Two did not have email addresses, and one reference had a phone number, which I was told by the library department when they called them, was not valid. So given that the proper form was not uploaded and the replacement form did not have all the required information, and some of the information I was told was invalid, the department director chose to reject the bid. So at this point, I'd recommend that you deny the appeal and have the bid remain rejected.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have a motion and a second. Ro call.
Harding.
Yes.
Hug.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Roe.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Goodwin.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Aye.
Motion passed seven to zero. Item fifty-five, BMI Janitorial Group appeals rejection of their bid for March twelfth, two thousand and twenty-five for janitorial services for Omaha Public Libraries.
Is there someone from BMI Janitorial Group here to speak?
Yes.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. I'm Dan Beckman with BMI, four two three South one hundred and sixty-second Street. We supplied a reference sheet that was more detailed than the sheet that, the form that was given by the, the library or the city. We couldn't fit all of our references on that sheet, so we provided a different document that gives more details, and that's, that's what I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jeffrey Bloom, City of Omaha Law Department. I won't go into a lot of the reasons why we did this as far as for this bid as well, but it was a similar one. As far as in this particular form, BJ, excuse me, BMI Janitorial Group also used their own form. However, this form did not include the complete addresses of any of the references. It did not include full names of any of the contact people, and it did not include email addresses for any of the references. So in other words, even if we were accepted, to accept their form, it was not completed as required by the bid requirements. So, and unfortunately, whereas in their bid appeal, they did ask that this to be a correctable error, unfortunately, it doesn't fall within the very limited categories in which can be a correctable error when it comes to a bid. So in this case as well, we reject, we ask that this bid appeal be rejected. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Is there a motion? Got a motion and a second. Ro call.
Harding. Hug. Melton. Roe. Festerson. Goodwin. Mr. President.
Aye.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Non-action items, items 56 through 87, do not require public hearing or city council consideration at this meeting, but will be placed on a future agenda for public hearing and/or vote. The reason for non-action is noted after the item on the agenda, as well as the date the item is expected to appear on agenda for consideration.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. Ro call.
Harding. Hug. Melton. Roe. Festerson. Goodwin. Mr. President.
Aye.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Meeting is adjourned at 3:10.